Okay, now we're going to move on to the next item under Conduct of Business.
Item 6B, Appeal of the Removal of Two Heritage Trees From the Florida Avenue Park Development Site.
Marty? Marty?
Yes, so I discussed this appeal briefly earlier today with our city attorney, Zafarano, and he recommends I recuse myself from this appeal. One, I live within 500 feet of the park. And two, the appeal impacts the park's design and potential use. So for that reason, for those reasons, I'm going to leave for a little bit.
But you'll come back.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move on, continue on with the item B, and City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. Javon Grogan, City Manager, I will be presenting our item. We have a sliding pin problem. I'll be presenting our item today on the Florida Avenue Park. As the council knows, I started with the city on July 30th, and shortly after becoming the city manager, our interim Community Services Director departed from the city. We had already selected our new Community Services Director, Joanne McGrini, who's in the audience, but for approximately four months, I also served as the interim Community Services Director with responsibility over our parks and our recreation. And so I took the lead since August on this project, and so I will give the presentation here tonight as well. So, we have a few objectives of our presentation today, and there are four listed on the slide. The first one is to provide an overview of the development of the new Florida Avenue Park. We want to present and discuss the layout and design of the park, and then really talk about the critical issue that we're here grappling with is the two heritage trees that remain on the site. And so we want to provide a little background on the decision to remove those trees and the heritage tree removal permit that was provided, and also talk about the Citizens' Appeal, which is the item that's before you tonight. In addition, we'll discuss a few potential alternatives and next steps. So, it looks like a long agenda, but I will be as brief as possible and really hit the core points. But our agenda for this presentation is we'll have the background, we'll talk about the site acquisition and the park planning process that was very in-depth, we'll talk about the current design that was approved by council, the park elements. We will also go over the heritage tree issue, both give a little background on the heritage tree ordinance, arborist findings and recommendations, we'll talk about the heritage tree removal permit, and then the appeal. Staff will also provide council with a few alternatives, Alternative 1 and Alternative 2. We'll also talk about the option of approving the permit or denying the permit. Then we'll have question and answers from council on the staff presentation. The appellant will have 10 minutes to present, we will have public comment, and then council discussion and direction. So, the project site, as you can see on the screen, the project site is located in the heart neighborhood, and this aerial shot really shows the heart and the location of the site. So, a little background, the city acquired the site for $600,000 in October of 2014. The city then undertook an internal planning process in 2015. There was a necessity for site remediation that cost approximately $430,000, and you see a picture of that remediation, and on top you actually see a picture of the property prior to the remediation. It's worth noting that this property, prior to the city acquiring it, was a code enforcement issue for the community and the city that the community really grappled with for years. And so when the owner came into City Hall to address the code enforcement issues, conversations begun that led to eventually the city purchasing the site and developing the park. And so, the city council adopted a budget of 1.4 million for park planning and design. It's also worth noting that in total, this park, once constructed, will represent a $2.6 million investment from the city of San Bruno, so a significant investment to bring a park to a neighborhood that very much needs it. A little bit of background, just interesting on the site. When the site was acquired, it came with a carving from 1915, a wood carving titled "The Independence of Switzerland," that was carved by the former owner, Mr. Pergosset, of 324 Florida Avenue. The carving was actually displayed in the 1938 and 1939 Golden Gate International Exhibition, now the DeYoung Museum, and the city restored that beautiful carving, and it's currently on display in City Hall. It is nine feet high by 10 feet wide, it weighs 3,000 pounds, and it's made of Hungarian mahogany. And so, it's a wonderful artwork that if anyone goes in the City Hall, it's right there in the lobby. So, a little bit about the master planning for this project. So, the city undertook a master planning and hired a outside firm called Mig to undertake not only the planning process, but the community engagement thereabout. There was a needs assessment and a site inventory that was conducted, and in June of 2016 was the first community engagement workshop. A master plan was eventually developed and then adopted by the city council in October of 2016, and even at this point, this project was two years in the making. And so, the image that is before you is an image from the master plan, which really shows a central lawn feature with play equipment, both adult and children's play equipment. I think the important part about this, anytime you go from a master plan to final schematic designs, there are changes, but it is important to note that the two heritage trees are a part of this master plan, and the appellant, I'm sure, will point that out. Background, so a little bit more background. So, following the adoption of the master plan in late 2016 and early 2017, preparation of specific plans and designs were undertaken. The city eventually awarded a construction contract to Star Construction on August of 2017 to begin constructing the park. Star Construction had a few challenges, and the city eventually canceled that contract. We are currently in negotiations with the legal department to finally resolve that contract, but that was a delay in the project. Around the same time, a number of design challenges came up with the project, and staff made a number of what I would call minor design changes. Some design changes regarding fencing, the irrigation connections, planting types, more hardy plants because they'd be toppled during the play activity, and some other changes. But the primary concerns that were raised were about the heritage trees that were in the construction diagrams to remain. It's also worth noting that there are a number of staffing changes that occurred throughout the life of this project. The Community Services Department head that managed the project retired and is no longer with the city. The city manager that this project started with is no longer with the city. The interim Community Services Director that helped to shepherd this project while he was here for approximately 100 days is no longer with the city. And so, there was just a number of staffing changes that frankly impacted the progress on this project. A couple key features of the design is there is a children's play area with a rubberized play surface, there is adult exercise equipment with a cardio area and a multi-generational play equipment. As you'll see in the next image, there is a great lawn feature with turf. There's a minimum of 12 new trees that the plan calls for to be installed on the site. There's a neighborhood square with some nice scorched stone paving and picnic tables. There's also various pedestrian paths. And so, this is the current design, and I will take a moment here just to point out. So, the park is actually bordered by four streets. You have Martin Place toward the west, Taylor towards the south, Florida Avenue toward the southeast, and San Amsoil towards the eastern north. The important part, and it's highlighted, I think, germane to our discussion today, is that the current design does call for including the two heritage trees. And it's also worth noting here that the larger of the two heritage trees is right under the play equipment, and we'll talk about some of the concerns that were raised with those being in the design. But first, let's talk about what is a heritage tree. So, the San Bruno Municipal Code defines a heritage tree as a native bay oak redwood or pine tree that has a, that is at least six inches or more in diameter, measured at 54 feet above natural grade. A heritage tree can also be any tree or stand of trees designated by the council to have special historical value or significant community benefit. A stand of trees that depend upon each other for their survival, or any other tree with a trunk diameter of 10 inches or more, measured at 54 feet above natural grade. The municipal code also provides for a removal process for heritage trees, and it is a normal process in our management of the urban forestry to have heritage tree permit removal projects. You know, I actually don't know how many we receive a year, but I can tell you in my three and a half months here, I've seen at least four or five. And so, it does happen as a regular course of maintaining the urban landscape. So, the heritage tree ordinance provides for a removal process. It requires a city permit, it is subject to specific site or tree conditions, there are also replanning up requirements. So, for each heritage tree that's removed, it has to be replaced with two 24-inch box trees or one 36-inch box tree. There is an appeal process, so a minimum of a 10-day appeal process, and all appeals are heard by the city council, which is why we are here today. And so, now, we will talk about the heritage trees that are currently at the project site for the new Florida Avenue Park. So, there are two heritage trees on the site. One is a Norfolk Island pine, and we have the, one of the independent arborists here, and so he can talk more about the species, because, believe it or not, it's actually not a pine, but the common name for it is a Norfolk Island pine. That tree is currently 90 feet tall, it has a trunk diameter of 36.5 inches. It has been topped in the past, and so the limbs branch out, and in the future, they may grow at a faster pace because it has been topped in the past. As you can see from the tree, and this is the one on the left-hand side, the lower limbs have been removed. The other one is a Deodore cedar tree that is currently 35 to 40 feet tall. It has two trunks. The main trunk is 29 inches in diameter, and the secondary trunk is 15 inches in diameter. And so, with the diameter of these trees, they certainly meet our heritage tree ordinance. So, a couple concerns that were raised. Again, these concerns were raised after the final construction diagrams were developed and awarded. So, the proximity to the children's play equipment. One of the concerns was hazard from falling cones and a potential, the potential impact to the root system during construction. So, as you saw, the Norfolk Island pine is on the northern side of the property, actually near the neighboring fence, but that tree is very much in the location where the pit for the play equipment will need to be constructed. And so, one of the concerns that was raised was how much of the root structure would be impacted by the construction. There was also a concern with maintenance issues. The Norfolk Island pine excretes honeydew that can become very sticky, stick to clothing, potentially stick to the play equipment that would be under it, and really create a maintenance issue. There were a number of questions about the health of the trees, and members of the community were informed that the trees were diseased, and we were, that was certainly a concern that the city had. There was also a concern about enhanced landscape maintenance from the various pine needles that drop. And also, park aesthetics was raised specifically with regard to the Deodore cedar. And so, the city hired a independent, actually two independent arborists. So, when I arrived, I attended the August Park and Recreation Subcommittee, and there were a number of members in the community that really wanted to know the status. They had heard some of these concerns, and they had also heard that the trees would be removed. Being new, I committed to read a lot of the documents, understand what was going on, and I made the decision to hire two independent arborists because I really wanted there to be transparency and trust in the information that was being provided. And so, we undertook that process. And so, we hired two independent arborists, and those reports are in the packet before you. And so, I'll go through the findings now. Specifically for the Norfolk Island pine, the arborist findings was the play structures are within six feet of the trunk. The root structure loss due to construction of the pits would be 25 to 30 percent. This tree is at its maturity point and producing many cones, and those cones are one to two pounds. I actually have one here. The cones, when they're on the tree, are one to two pounds, almost grapefruit size. And when they fall, they fall from near the top of the tree, 50 to 80 feet. And the arborist noted in the report that a falling cone could cause serious harm or death, and actually, they're sticky. And so, both of the arborists recommended removing this tree due to really the concern with potential harm from the falling cones. Fresh squirrel damage was observed, so when these cones typically fall, they shrivel up and dry, and for most of the time when they fall, they are light and, or lighter and probably resembling more of an acorn. There was observed at the time when these arborists went out, or one of the arborists went out, a green cone on the ground, and the arborist who's here can articulate more, but oftentimes that happens because of squirrel damage. And so, the recommendation was to remove this tree because it's inconsistent with the park design and the layout of the play equipment, and really to protect safety of the users at the park. This was private property, it has been purchased by the city, and building a park, we will be inviting people to be under this tree. The second heritage tree is a Deodore cedar. The arborist findings is that the tree has been heavily trimmed and topped in the past. As you can see, it is deformed, the deformity from the prior pruning is permanent, and the root loss from installation of the walking path, not necessarily the play equipment, here would be approximately 10 to 15 percent. The arborist's recommendations for this tree was remove one limb that has decayed and cracked, but the overall risk is currently low. One of the arborists did note that the presence of additional people under the root ball may help accelerate failure of the tree, but both arborists recommend that with proper care, the tree could remain. And, so, recap. Recap of the heritage tree removal process. So, our staff arborists concluded that the tree should be removed, the city hired two independent arborists to provide second and third opinions. This information and an overall project update was provided to the Park and Recreation Commission on their September 19th meeting. Staff in executing the current design post-issued and posted two heritage tree removal permits on September 20th. There was a group citizen appeal that was received on September 26th, and so the appeal was duly received, and it complies with our municipal code guidelines. It was received by a group of seven individuals. The primary reason cited was that the heritage trees are healthy, they are not diseased, both arborists concluded that. The community designed by removing the trees, the appellant's feel will be altered, and they believe the risk can be mitigated. The appellant will have a 10-minute presentation following the staff presentation, so I'll stop there and let them articulate their case. Potential design alternatives. So, as always, staff likes to provide the council with alternatives and options, and so, we've done that in this case as well. And so, should the council choose to accept the appeal, and accepting the appeal means that both heritage trees would be retained. Staff developed two preliminary alternatives to retain both trees. Alternative Design 1 calls for the relocation of the children's play area closer to the middle of the park site, thereby increasing the distance from the root structure of the tree. It also moves the play equipment out of the fall zone, and we have an image of that. This alternative reduces the size of the lawn feature near the Florida Avenue side of the park. In addition, the fall zone around the Norfolk Island pine, staff would recommend fencing that off. We feel that the liability posed by this tree, no matter how slight, is significant to the city. With the arborist's reports, we are on notice of the potential danger of this tree, and so should they remain on the site, and this is a public property that we would be inviting people to, we think that it's reasonable to fence off that portion to provide an added measure of safety, and that would amount to fencing off, I think, about a third of the park, and you'll see that in the next diagram. So, the estimated timeline, to redesign the park and removing the play equipment, we talked to Mig, the designer. That cost would approximately be $50,000 to $75,000. We would then need a three-to-six-month process to rebid the project and select a contractor. That three-to-six-month process would happen initially because where we are now, we need to rebid the project. We estimate construction would start in the second quarter of 2019, anticipate completion in the fourth quarter of 2019 and early 2020. What's not on the slide but mentioned in the report is with the current design, we think that we can certainly finish, rebid the project and finish the project in 2019. Under this model, contingent upon factors, potentially rain delays in 2019, we're estimating somewhere between the fourth quarter of 2019 and 2020. And so, I hit the wrong button. This is the redesign of Alternative Design 1, and so you have the Norfolk Island pine here and the Deodore cedar here, and so we would recommend this portion of the site actually being fenced off, the play equipment moving up. And so, through this design, we think we can retain all of the elements that are currently in the park. What's really lost is the size of the great lawn and this area, which we would strongly recommend be fenced off and made unusable. Then there's ulterior. Alternative Design 2 is to eliminate all the play equipment in the park and provide a large lawn area in the middle of the Florida Avenue Park. This creates a dedicated area in the rear for the heritage trees that would be fenced off and unusable. The redesign on this would be a lot shorter because you're essentially removing all the play equipment and just doing a lawn. We think that this can certainly be completed within 2019, and that is an image of providing a great lawn, but you would lose about a third. And so, those are just two very conceptual options for council to consider. There are obviously many other options that are available to council. That concludes our staff presentation. Happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Are there any questions of council about the presentation or on the presentation? Eric? No? Okay. Then we will move on to the appellant, who's going to be representing. Please. And then, Melissa? The timer? We won't start until you're ready.
Karen Chromesini?
No, no, no. This is the appellant?
This is the group presentation, a 10-minute presentation.
The timer, Melissa?
Right.
Okay. But when you're ready, you let us know.
Sure. Do you know which one it is?
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Medina and City Council, for allowing us time to deliver our appeal. My name is Samantha Takahashi. I live in the heart of San Bruno on Carlton Avenue. I hold a BS degree in botany and an MS in systems management. Everyone here tonight wants the Florida Park construction to start this coming spring. We want the park that the community and the city design together. We want the park that our children can enjoy, we can enjoy, and the park that cherishes and celebrates the two heritage trees that have lived on this land for more than 100 years. These trees predate the incorporation of San Bruno in 1914. Our appeal was filed on behalf of 17 San Bruno residents. Our attorney sent a letter to the city stating our legal arguments. We hope this appeal process will avoid litigation. We maintain that the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as SEQA requirements, have not been met by the city of San Bruno. We are asking the city to follow the law. The staff report confirms the city's intention to not follow SEQA. In this report, five revisions were requested by staff. The fifth revision states, and I quote, "Remove existing heritage trees or amend plans for the location and/or inclusion of a children's play area." Staff further wrote, and I quote, "Items 1 to 4 are relatively minor to the overall concept and future use of the park. However, item 5 has significant implications on the usability and configuration of the park." Again, the city confirmed item 5 as a significant change, and therefore would trigger SEQA. We'd like to give you some background. The city first brought the neighborhood together in June 2016 to design the park. There were a series of meetings. The park was designed around the two historical heritage trees as centerpieces. The city agreed and approved the final design with the heritage trees remaining. This design included a play structure located near the Norfolk Island pine. In August of 2017, the city council approved a construction contract with Star Construction, Inc. The city decided to terminate the contract in November of 2017. The city has not explained why they terminated the contract. Not until September 19th, 2018, did staff bring to the public their safety concerns, more than two years after the community and the city first met to design the park. Staff's mistakes have now placed the life of these two 100-year-old trees at risk. The city then offered a design change that fenced the Norfolk Island pine as a precaution. Later, the city rejected their own plan based on cost. We are asking the city council to honor the original plan from 2017, with both heritage trees included in the Florida Park design. This was agreed upon by the city with the informed knowledge of the residents. This would negate SEQA and further legal action. The city has presented inconsistent arguments against keeping the trees. Michael Stallings, the interim Park and Rec Director, told us in June of this year, "They were diseased." He further stated they would require care and maintenance the city was unwilling to commit to due to cost. The argument the trees are diseased is not credible. I, Samantha Takahashi, sent an email to City Manager Jackson questioning the health of the trees. Under pressure, Ms. Jackson stepped back from the city's stance. When Cron 4 reporter Hermela Agawi discussed the cost of maintenance with Ms. Jackson on July 20th of this year, she was told this would not be a reason to cut the trees down. Not until the Parks and Rec Commission meeting on September 19th, two months ago, did the city bring safety concerns to the discussion. This brings to question the timing, credibility, and intent of the city's many evolving positions. First, our heritage trees were sick, then too costly to maintain, and now the Norfolk Island pine poses grave safety concerns for our children, and aesthetics of the Deodore cedar have been brought into question. The historical trees should not be We have them in our parks, on school property, and even over the play structure at Seventh Avenue Park. There are hundreds of cones hanging from trees over the Seventh Avenue play structure. These trees have been there for decades. There is a cone-producing tree that sits between City Hall and the library where children gather. Tree branches with cones also hang over our athletic fields and our city sidewalks. Longtime San Bruno resident Tony P. lives at 543 Chestnut Avenue. He has a Norfolk Island pine in his front yard. He has never seen a cone fall, and no one has ever been injured. The city is aware of this tree. City staff told Tony there are only four such trees like it in San Bruno, and that they can never be cut down. Tony extends an invitation to the city council to visit him and his tree to learn the facts. We maintain it's far more likely a member of the public could receive injuries from being struck by a vehicle or tripping over broken sidewalks while walking to the park. It's more likely a child could injure themselves falling from the play structure than being struck by a cone. We asked local hospitals for the number of ER visits due to being hit by falling cones. Our inquiries elicited their laughter as they remarked, and I quote, "No one has been struck by a cone." While very unlikely cone injuries have happened, let me share one of very few examples with you. In 2014, Mr. Mace was injured by a falling bunya pine cone in the San Francisco Maritime National Historical Park. The cones from these trees can weigh as much as 40 pounds. This example has little relevancy when discussing the safety of the trees at Florida Park because the weight of the bunya cone is up to 20 times greater than that of the Norfolk Island pine. Mr. Mace sued the park because it didn't have a warning sign. The park addressed the liability by posting signs warning the public of the unusually large cones and constructing a fence. The tree was not cut down. We now would like to discuss the cost of updating architectural plans. The city indicates changing the plans to move the play structure eight to 10 feet would cost between $50,000 and $75,000. How can a small change in a small park cost so much? Has the city council verified these figures other than using staff? Without verification of these figures, how can you, our city council, make an informed decision? Retired CAD systems administrator with more than 30 years' experience, Charisse Fowler, says, "Moving the play structure would be a simple redesign. Generously speaking, it might take 10 hours to move the play structure and cascade changes throughout all the corresponding sheets, planting plans, landscape layout, sidewalk layout, irrigation area plans, and lighting and electrical plans. I would estimate the billable rate at $150 an hour and a total redesign expense not to exceed a few thousand dollars." The city authored report places of cutting the trees down at $7,000 to $10,000. We can address the public's safety and move the play structure for less than the cost of cutting these trees down. In conclusion, we want the neighborhood to be proud of the first city park in the heart of San Bruno. Please honor the community's design, the design the city council unanimously approved in August of 2017, more than a year ago, the design that leaves the historical Deodar cedar and the Norfolk Island pine standing. These trees have many years of life remaining. Norfolk Island pine trees live 150 years or more, and the Deodar cedar can live upwards of 1,000 years. These trees stood on this ground before most of our homes. By leaving both our heritage trees, the Deodar cedar and the Norfolk Island pine standing, fencing the Norfolk Island pine off, and moving the play structure eight to 10 feet, we avoid a SEQA violation, we address the city's safety concerns, honor the original design of Florida Park, and provide the most cost-effective solution. This solution unites our community. This is the only solution that pays honor to the city's community outreach efforts and delivers the park we designed together. Please weigh all the facts and options heard tonight carefully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that. It did go a little over, but I wanted you to be able to finish up, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions from council for the appellant? I just had one, if I could. I saw Bay Hill Park. Were you saying Bay Hill Park is in San Bruno?
I didn't mention...
Well, it was, when I saw the video, it said Bay Hill Park. I'm sorry, I'm asking the applicant, the appellant, I'm sorry.
Those were images of trees that have cones on them.
Thank you. Okay. I just, because I was like, okay, we used to work at Parks and Rec, and that was baffling me, so thank you.
Okay.
Is there any questions? No? Okay. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and open up to public comment, and so, how many do we have at this point?
We have 13 speaker cards.
13, okay. So what Melissa's going to do is she's going to call a couple up at a time, just to kind of keep the line going, if that's okay. And so, at this point, we're going to do two minutes per speaker, please, and then if you could call up a couple so they can get prepared.
First up, Sandra Perez Vargas, followed by Jason Flanders.
Hello. It took us a long time to get here, and I really think we shouldn't be here at all. Tonight, we shouldn't be here having an appeal if the city had done their job correctly. It all started off well with the city working with the residents, and we were all really excited. But somewhere along the way, the designs that were given back to the city were not the ones that were agreed on, and this question has not been answered. Why did we accept something we didn't turn over? If I had received that back, I would say, "This is not what I gave you." You know, go back, redo it. We have to honor what we started with, and that didn't happen. And instead of having that conversation with residents, we're lied to. Connie Jackson, our former manager, literally lied to us, telling us that these were diseased trees, not only to the residents, she lied to the Parks and Recs, so they were completely convinced that these trees were sick and were a danger. When that was proven not to be true, now it's a safety issue, and it's been one thing or another. It seems like people are just throwing something to see what's going to stick, and right now we're writing out the safety issue. I mean, I've driven all over San Bruno. There are pine cones at Cappuccino High School, over the tracks. They are Seventh Avenue. They're not only hanging, they're literally covering it. I know that the people from the city go out there, the workers, I'm sure they see that, and they've never deemed it a danger. Trick-or-treating the other night, I was in one of the streets by canes. There was a huge trees with huge pines, and I've never heard of anybody getting hit from them. And quite honestly, the way we've been deceived so far, I'm not convinced that that pine was found on the floor. I'm not convinced of it. It's very easy for somebody to pull it out and say, "Here, this is what we found, here's your danger." But this is not about that. This is about the city not accepting responsibility for what they've done and not working and being honest with the residents. I think we can do a lot better than this, and you have an opportunity tonight to say, "Let's correct this. Let's move on. Let's do what's right. Let's be honest with our residents," and honor that. You have an opportunity to make things right tonight, and this, not just about these trees, what's going to happen to the trees at the rec center? We hear now that even after the first meeting when we said, "We don't want any of the redwood trees touched," now I'm hearing they're going to cut them all down to accommodate a new rec center. Other cities work around the trees, they don't cut them down. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, just as a reminder, you'll have lights on the podium, and then when you get to the other, you have about 30 seconds left, please.
Jason Flanders, followed by Maureen De Jong Caro.
Good evening, council members. Jason Flanders from the Aqua Terra Eris Law Group, here tonight on behalf of Friends of Florida Park in support of the appeal. As the council is aware, anytime the city takes a discretionary action that may result in any change to the physical environment, SEQA review is required. Here, none's occurred, and unfortunately, this project is now unnecessarily vulnerable to legal challenge. The proposal to remove these two heritage trees, as we documented in our letter, clearly does require SEQA review under SEQA's regulations. I also wanted to briefly mention the case of Friends of College of San Mateo Gardens, in which the community college proposed a campus redevelopment project to remove a number of buildings, underwent SEQA review and approved it after the fact. They wanted to remove one additional building and a garden, and the Court of Appeals said new SEQA reviews required. This removal of the garden had never previously been considered, and this is a potentially significant impact and a significant change, and here, the proposed removal of these two trees is no different. If the city were to undertake SEQA review of the proposed removal of the two trees, the impact would likely be considered significant, and it would require a thorough review of mitigation measures and alternatives, any of which deemed feasible would have to be adopted to avoid that. So, for example, the mitigation measures proposed by staff today would undergo a more thorough review, and we could perhaps have fencing that doesn't take up 30% of the park but still prevents any potential dangers from the falling cones. If the 2016 plan were simply modified to add some fencing, signage, or relocate the playground, no SEQA review would be triggered because those changes wouldn't result in any new potentially significant impacts to the environment, just moving pieces around. So in conclusion, there is a simple solution by revising the 2016 plan that doesn't require SEQA review, and the Friends of Florida Park strongly urge the council to adopt that approach. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping to time.
Maureen De Jong Caro, followed by Tim O'Brien.
Maureen has given me proxy. She's a flight attendant. I have her email, and unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight, and she wanted me to basically speak on her behalf that she definitely opposes the decision of cutting the heritage tree, and she wishes that those trees remain in the site where the new park will go, so she can teach her 10-year-old daughter that San Bruno does respect this tree, and she wants to basically be able to bring her daughter and show her how San Bruno has a heart. So I'm speaking on her behalf. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim O'Brien, followed by Reyna Burgos.
Good evening. Tim O'Brien, Florida Avenue. I have a statement from an arborist. It's about his assessment of the trees, the Norfolk pine especially. This is his exact statement. "It is my professional opinion that the Norfolk pine on Florida Avenue is in relatively healthy condition overall. The cones on this tree should be of concern only in extreme wild conditions for dropping. The majority of the cones should break apart at maturity and not pose any potential hazard. My recommendation would be to have the tree fenced off to eliminate any possibilities of cones dropping into an area where humans may be present." And that's his statement, and I have some other comments to make. We need these trees. A lot of things come into play. I mean, they're a necessity for the environment, they're a necessity for wildlife, and they bring aesthetic joy to our community, especially looking out my front door every morning, walking out, the sun rising behind the trees, or not rising, the sunset. They're beautiful trees, and they've done nothing wrong. They deserve to be there like we do on this earth. Also, we have a school named John Muir in San Bruno. What would John Muir say if he was here today and heard about these trees being cut down, actually killed, not cut down, killing the trees? They deserve to be here, and he has a quote, "God has cared for these trees, saved the trees from drought, disease, avalanches, and a thousand tempests and floods, but he cannot save the trees from falls." That's an exact quote from John Muir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reyna Burgos, followed by Jeffrey Tong.
Florida Avenue. This is very emotional, and I'm going to stick with facts. Okay, our city manager basically just said that they found a pine cone that he actually showed you, but I'm quoting, I'm actually going to quote what the arborist said, that he had to climb up all the way up to the tree to remove the pine cone you demonstrated. So that pine cone, that pine was not found on the ground, and that's a fact. Secondly, I was walking Bruno and Bowie this evening, and we have, and I totally quote the video, "There are pine cones, there are trees all over the city." We're not suggesting that the city go and cut every single tree that produces cones. What we're saying is, if you're going to raise the issue of safety, why not raise it in this other location? Why have to be targeted at Florida Park? You need to respect the final plan that the community and the city council approved. You need to unite us. You also have said that we have delayed the park. This is ludicrous. We have not delayed the park, we have not delayed it. So I'm asking you, please, honor the original plan that was designed by both the community and the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Tong, followed by Karen Chromosini.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Jeffrey Tong from Fleetwood. I'm here to appeal that the city council consider altern, is this on? I'm here to appeal that the city council consider alternative design number one and a portion of alternative design number two. Specifically, alternative number one, reduce the great lawn area. Alternative number two, move or eliminate the play equipment. And three, make Florida Street Park more than a jungle gym, make it a nature discovery park for both children and adults. Qualify it as a wildlife habitat by providing food, water, nesting area, shelter for wildlife, and certify it as a national wildlife habitat. Ecological benefits, our nurturing wildlife nurtures ourselves. It increases biodiversity, biodiversity. And educational benefits, children need to play with soil, water, and plants. It reconnects them with the earth. And economic benefits, the National Association of Realtors say homes are worth 5% more when near a park. But earning the National Wildlife Federation certified community wildlife habitat designation will give the city of San Bruno national recognition and the unique distinction of being the only community wildlife habitat in northern California. With regards to the heritage trees, do you agree that senior citizens are to be respected? Old people may not be pretty or look symmetrical, but should that justify killing them? Likewise, for all flora and fauna. Thank you. But earning the National Wildlife Federation certified community wildlife habitat designation will give the city of San Bruno national recognition and the unique distinction of being the only community wildlife habitat in northern California. With regards to the heritage trees, do you agree that senior citizens are to be respected? Old people may not be pretty or look symmetrical, but should that justify killing them? Likewise, for all flora and fauna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Chromosini, followed by Stephen Seymour.
Good evening. I don't know. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would just like to say, here it says, "A city with a heart." Well, I don't think that city has a heart, and when we have to cut down the trees just for somebody that does not like them, or there is just, those trees are meaning a lot to people, and thinking of the next generation to have them around. And we're losing a lot of trees through disaster, or natural disaster and everything, and then we just go ahead and cut down trees for a reason. Like I say, we could move the playground away from it just to be safe, and that would be, you can plant underneath the trees, you can make a nice, other plants to enjoy people. And I just have to say this, that those trees really are beautiful, and I love nature, and we should really not cut it down. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stephen Seymour, followed by Russell Steins.
How do we get to the main page?
Up, right corner.
Up, here?
Yep.
Over? Yeah, it's a video. With sound, yes. I can't see.
What are you looking for?
Do you see a, is that it?
Yeah, that's the piece there.
I'll get it. You got it.
For as long as anyone can remember, this lot at Florida and Taylor Avenues in San Bruno had a large, old, abandoned house on it. Neighbors say it got to be an eyesore.
It was very prehistoric looking, and it was graffiti on, junk was thrown in there.
The city took possession of the property and plans to build a new park, but so far, the only thing that looks park-like here are the two trees at the back of the lot. And that's ironic, because one landscaping plan calls for the two trees to be chopped down.
I didn't understand why they would have to knock down some heritage trees to build a park, when typically go to parks to enjoy the shade of a tree.
Yeah, that was funny, because the park is a tree, and those are beautiful trees.
It's unclear how old the trees actually are. Some say 70, some say 100 years old. No one at City Hall was available to speak with us, but neighbors have reportedly gotten emails explaining the trees are in an area where a children's play structure is planned. But neighbor Maureen De Jong Karo says the trees are landmarks to the area, and the plans ought to be adjusted.
If they were like in the middle of it, maybe I could see a point, you know? But I can't imagine that they can't work around it.
Thomas Garola grew up in a house across the street and remembers watching the crows fly in and out of the branches. He believes the trees are as much a part of San Bruno's heritage as any of the historic homes that have been preserved.
These pine cones, I've found all over, I mean, the city's full of pine cone-producing trees. These are lying on the tracks at the high school, what you were asking about earlier. If you walk up San Bruno Avenue to Molly Stone, you're going to walk under trees that have hundreds and hundreds of pine cones on them. I mean, they exist all over our city, and these can weigh a pound, pound and a half. I want to show you how the pine cone from the tree falls. These are the needles. These are the needles from the Norfolk Island pine, and this is how the pine cones normally fall. And this is how, I picked all of these up at the gentleman's house on Chestnut, who's invited you over, so you could see his tree. He's never seen a pine cone on the ground. I'll pick this up when we're done.
I wasn't going to ask that question. Thank you.
Russell Steins, followed by Mickey Lovell.
Sorry to mess Russell.
Good evening, Council, and Mr. Mayor, Russell Steins. It's unfortunate to see that we've gotten to this point. This may be a very valuable lesson for us all. I believe that our city asked this community to help design a park, and they did, and everyone was happy. Unfortunately, due to lack of transparency and the mistake of the architect we hired, it has separated our neighbors. When I left the park and rec meeting, I was convinced that the big pine was a safety concern and should be removed, and I thought that the city had made the wrong decision on the other tree because it was ugly. But because my neighbors were at such odds, I decided to do a little more research. So I went home and I typed in, "What are the odds of a pine cone hitting a person?" And to my surprise, I had a better chance of hitting the lottery. This being said, however this works out, I ask our new city manager from this day forward for total transparency, and for his commitment to work and protect our community, and to make sure when we do a study on trees, parks, buildings, infrastructure, parking, and et cetera, that we get an unbiased opinion, an unbiased report. This is not easy to do. Example, if I'm selling a home, the home inspector will write a favorable report, and if I'm buying that same home, the same home inspector will write an unfavorable report. So please, Jovan, I ask you with consciousness, we truly need your honesty. This cannot be meet the new boss, same as the old boss. It appears to this resident that the architect made a mistake and should correct it at their own expense, as in any business in the private sector would do. Otherwise, it'd be faced with a lawsuit. And to our city council, please remember, the true experts of this community are your neighbors, and that reports can be compromised depending on which way one wants them to be. So please, everyone, don't ever let this happen again. Tonight, city council, you choose between life and death. I hope you will choose life. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Steins.
Mickey Lovell, followed by Andy Mason.
Good evening, everybody, friends, council people. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I raised my family. I bought my house here in San Bruno in 1979. I lived up in the Rollingwood. And, well, I was in the Boy Scouts with my son. I was one of the leaders. We have a great conservation ethic there, and I get this feeling about the ethics of, well, including that SEQA, you know, going with the law. And I know, as a retired firefighter in San Francisco, I mean, I fought fires in San Francisco's Golden Gate Park, crown fires, you know, with just one single-engine company. But, so, I've saved trees, but along with my Boy Scout troop, I was a troop leader, we planted acorns from some of the oak trees in the neighborhood. And I just want you to know that my heart is in this, saving these two trees. I took garden construction know-how at City College, horticulture major, and also fire science major. So I procrastinated long, and I don't have a degree in either of these subjects, but I have a lot of knowledge, and I just don't see how they would plan on cutting the roots of these trees. I got to consult with my teachers, who are still there at City College. I know I have 10 seconds, and I just want to thank you that you can feel my passion. If you can't, hear my adrenaline going. I know, thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Mason, followed by Adam Cosetti.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I have three main points. Andy Mason, Cherry Avenue. Three main points. There may be an opportunity and a need to revisit and revise our heritage tree ordinance here in the city with a more ecological mindset. I think San Bruno has a lot of beautiful coastal live oaks, a lot of kind of habitat, which are in medians, easements with the city. That all should be protected. There's also, we could expand the species. There's manzanitas, there's chaparral, a number of coastal live oaks. Number two, the Parks and Rec Commission, I know our colleagues are here tonight, could host a really value-added heritage tree ordinance policy revision study session. We could bring in the community, we could bring in guest speakers. Let's make this an inclusive, larger tree policy. And furthermore, we could also partner better with the county and regional open parks districts. So we're not just talking about one tree and one pine cone, but actually groves of trees and habitats. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Cosetti, followed by Victoria Bishop.
My name is Adam Cosetti, and I have lived in San Bruno for about four and a half years. I would like to just put in a word in favor of keeping both heritage trees. That's great that new trees are going to be planted on the park site, but if we were to cut down the existing ones, then we would have to wait many years before we could have mature trees for us to enjoy. I'm also a member of the Sierra Club, and the local club chapter's conservation committee has written a letter urging the city to preserve the trees for their environmental benefits. But really, I think the best reason for keeping the trees is just that so many people love these trees so much. We're building a new park, and we want it to be an asset for the neighborhood and the entire city, and it should be something we can all be proud of, which I think having these 100-year-old trees helps a lot with. Keeping the trees is going to make the park more successful. People will appreciate the park more and take better care of it. And so I know you have a few options in front of you, but I hope you can find some way to preserve these two heritage trees. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Victoria Bishop.
My name is Victoria Bishop. I've been living in San Bruno for about three years. It is my strong belief that these heritage trees should remain as part of the new park plan. Trees not only provide shade and oxygen, but also promote mental health. Studies have shown that being around trees and nature can reduce stress and benefit child development and learning. As an individual with an accreditation in environmental design, sorry, guys, I'm nervous, I've encountered countless examples of existing trees successfully incorporated into innovative outdoor designs. Furthermore, in a world of pollution, cars, and roadside litter, trees such as these are few and far between. I believe they should be cherished and celebrated rather than condemned. It is our job to move forward and not to erase what over 100 years of nature has accomplished. I urge the city council to relocate the play structure and please save these beautiful trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Last speaker.
Thank you. I'll be very quick. My name is Calista, and thank you, Mayor and Council Members. I wrote to you each, I believe at least twice, on this matter. And I just feel compelled, in addition to many valid points that our neighbors have brought up, I just want to talk on behalf of what everyone is calling our ugly tree, and just stop that, because the cedar is actually one of the most beautiful trees on that park. Its unusual silhouette is extremely valuable. I believe someone in the neighborhood called it landmark. It's as much of a silhouette to the skyline, and I really believe that its unusual shape makes it even that much more dear. I don't want to go too far down, you know, this road of let's value old people and how we all identify with trees, but truly speaking, I, the only thing that I cringed about tonight was the comments, and perhaps they were just offhand, that, you know, one of the trees was more beautiful and the other one wasn't. And I think we all know that the Charlie Brown tree was actually the most precious of all, and united the community. It's just, both of them are lovely. Please do take into account sincerely the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to bring it back to council and staff. Is there anything that needs to be finalized or updated, comments?
Sure. City Council, I do think that there are a couple things. I would like, if council is amenable, to invite the arborist up to discuss the difference between a more typical pine cone that was shown in the images of other parks, and that's on the dais, and the difference between these cones, because there is a very distinct difference. And to discuss the fall zone size for the Norfolk Island pine. In addition, I do think that it's appropriate to hear from the city attorney about the SEQA issue and about potential liability.
Who would, council?
That's amenable, I guess.
Yes, yes.
Arborist Kevin Kilty.
Counsel, I am Kevin Kilty, Kilty Arborist Services, and I was one of the two arborists hired for the project to review the trees on the site. So, about the cones, the, one thing we have, we must know about this, this is, even though the common name is Norfolk Island pine, it is not a pine tree, and it has, their cones are nowhere near the same as a pine. Neither is the attachment of the cones. I trimmed trees for close to 40 years. The pine cones are really hard to get off a tree. I mean, you hack away at them, you cut them, you just can't remove them. Whereas the Ericaria species is what this Norfolk Island pine is, they're a native to the South Pacific, their cones tend to roll out of the tree. So to get a couple of the cones on the ground, I threw a line up in the tree and just pulled them out. So they released much easier than what, like a Monterey pine cone would be. And the woman that said something about the Boonja Boonja pine cone that was 40 pounds, I've seen them up to 14 pounds. I haven't seen any 40 pounds. But when they fall, there's no warning. They just hit the ground and shatter. These with the Norfolk Island pine, generally when the cones fall, the gentleman that had these was correct, generally when the cones fall, it's because the squirrels have gotten impatient, and they've chewed the limbs, the ends of the limbs off. They'd rather work on the pine cones on the, or the seed pods on the ground rather than up in the tree. So that's when a lot of your cone failure on this species happens. So it's not totally common, but it does happen. And--
And the diameter for the fall zone?
Oh, the fall zone. The fall zone should be out, at least, these seed pods are out on the ends of the limbs, the very ends of the limbs. And the seed pods, as they fall, like I said, they tend to tumble, so the exclusion zone should be at the drip line plus about 10 feet more. So I think we had a crown spread on the cedar, I mean, on the Canary Island pine of, it was, I think, total crown spread of-- Yeah, the crown spread's about 45 feet, so the radius should be 25 feet, 30 feet, out from the trunk of the tree, would get us right about at the edge of the drip line of the tree. So I would say, we've seen it done in parks that have had the Ericarias. Central Park has a big Ericaria tree, and it's in a lawn area, rarely used. They don't have it fenced off until the seed, the seed pod, or the pods are noticed, and then they put signage up. And-- And, you know, moving the play structure is an option. I definitely would not locate the play structure beneath a tree, and the foundation for the play structure would cause pretty good root damage to this tree. This tree being mature may not respond too well to that root damage. So...
While we have the arborists, is there a question from council? Michael.
So, I heard that in one of the arborist reports, it said that the trees were viable, but they would require some proper care, and I was just wondering what proper care would entail and what the relative cost of that care would be compared to other trees that we have in the city.
Well, that is true. The Theodore Cedar, since it's been topped and has that disfigured trunk formation, what happens when you top a tree, it's just like when you prune your hedge, it gets wider if you take the top off. Well, trees work the same way. So, the fact that it's topped, you have heavier lateral limbs. When the tree was recently cleaned up, those limbs were brought in, and it is safe for now. They would probably have to be trimmed every three to five years to improve the safety of the tree. You're looking at a tree like that, maybe $1,000 to $1,500 to have it thoroughly trimmed. The Ericaria, the Norfolk Island pine, they have a tendency to get mealybug, which is a, an insect much like aphids, excretes tremendous amounts of honeydew. That would require an aerial spraying of the tree probably a couple times in the summer. It possibly could be cleaned up by a soil injection in the winter. Again, you're looking at, could be up to $500 a year in pest control costs. As far as the cones or the trimming of the tree, they don't generally need a lot of trimming. That one appears to have had the top taken off at some point, so again, you're going to get a longer lateral limb than normal, and if limb breakage became a factor, then it would have to be trimmed out.
And because they've been topped, would we expect that they would be any taller than they are now, or would they stay about the same height?
They're probably going to grow in height probably 18 inches to three feet a year, both species. So, that isn't a critical part. Mainly, the limb lengthening would be the critical part of that.
Okay. And I don't know if this one is for you or for staff, but I believe the roots of the Norfolk pine are kind of underneath the fence of the property line, and I'm wondering if that fence is going to cause any damage at some point, or is there any plan to remediate the damage to the fence as part of the...
Yeah. The fence is being lifted. The fence won't hurt the tree, but the tree will just, will eventually destroy that fence. It's a wood fence. It's not a tremendous cost to, you know, replace the fence boards or, you know, depending, I don't know if there's a plan for a better fence in that, for that property. There is a possibility of root damage to that neighboring house. That house is fairly old, and as we stated in the reports, the surface roots on the Canary Island pine are quite large. There's roots up to 15 inches in diameter coming off that tree. So, there is a possibility that that house has already been damaged or compromised, and every year that possibility gets greater.
Okay.
As roots expand.
Thank you.
Irene, Laura, you have questions of the arborist?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, and if we need you, we'll call you back up. Okay, great. Thank you. And then, city attorney regarding the legal question?
Yes, just a couple of brief comments. I think there were two issues raised, one of them having to do with SEQA, and the second one having to do with the city's potential liability. And I think we've heard a number of things about liability, in fact, even from the arborist apparently retained by the appellants recommending that there be an exclusion zone around the tree. I think that appears to be an acknowledgement of the fact that these cones can fall, and that, as our arborist indicated, if they do fall, there's a serious risk of either a serious injury or death. And I think it's difficult for the city council, would be difficult to ignore information on both sides that indicates that the falling cones from that tree are not a liability hazard. And so, if the tree is to be retained, then we would certainly recommend that there be an exclusion zone around the tree, as recommended by our arborist. There was a point made about, well, you know, there's pine cones falling from other trees, that may be true, except we don't have a report from all of our other pine trees that say that those cones are likely to cause serious injury or death. But we do in this case, and it's difficult for, would be difficult for the city, I think, to ignore that. I doubt that anybody here would volunteer to stand under one of those cones where it dropped on them from 50 feet. With respect to the SEQA issue, the, we heard a number of points that were made. I think what we didn't hear is that there's anything other than a common sense exemption for one or two trees under SEQA. I think the cases that Mr. Flanders cited have to do with multiple dozens, if not hundreds of trees. And in this case, we disagree with his analysis. Be that as it may, if the city were to cut the trees, the city would perform whatever SEQA analysis is required, and I think we've indicated we would do that. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, the city attorney? Irene?
Through the chair, now I'm a little confused. So, by and large, if we cut the two trees down, there is no violation of SEQA because it's, they're minor, in the grander scheme of things, it's a minor alteration of the plans, especially since we are planning on adding 12 to 15 trees. Is that...
If the, if the city were to determine to remove one or both trees, we would file the appropriate SEQA document as required by SEQA to determine that there's an exemption for either one or both of those trees on a number of different bases.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, anything for the attorney?
No.
Okay. Anything else, staff? Okay, so I'll bring it back to the council for additional questions, comments, discussion.
I do want to go because...
Irene?
Thank you. I've heard a lot of accusations and bad feelings from the public about the city wasn't transparent, or we're going to go back on our word, or we accepted something, and we should keep that, what we accepted, and if we do that, I mean, all these different things. Several of us went to the different meetings, the public meetings, talking about the Florida Park and asking for public input. Many of the people here who are talking about it now were never at those meetings, and some of you were, but most of you weren't. So, for you to talk as though you were part of that and to say you know what your neighbors want, I think is slightly misleading. We have several emails in, we've received several emails from people who say things like, "Be strong, do the right thing, you were all good people, cut the trees down and do the park." So, you know, this is, this is not something that should divide the city. This, let me start way back. I used to live on Fifth Avenue, in the avenues, and I used to go to swimming lessons at our city park, and I would walk through and around that site for years and my, with my bicycle and all those things. I've lived in San Bruno for 66 years, and many of those years, when it was basically abandoned, I thought that would be a great place to have a park. Even when I was a little kid, I thought that would be a great place to have a park. So, when I was, got to be on the council, and I heard that the person, the people who were, who owned the place were looking to sell it, I suggested and encouraged this council and the city manager to purchase that land because I thought it would be a great park. There's nothing much down in that area. And that's where it all started. So, that was that piece. The city put a lot of money into it. We really want to have a park down there, and we want the kids to have a place to play, not just to sit on the grass and look at two trees, to really have a place to run around and play on equipment and, you know, have a picnic with their friends and family and do all those things they really can't do easily at that area. So, so let me go back. I'm sorry this is long, but this has been, this has been a long time coming. So, and I'm sorry, was it you, Rico, or was it Michael, or both of us?
Four.
That we went to the public meetings?
I did.
You did. And you went to different ones.
And he was a commissioner.
Oh, you were a commissioner.
He was in the Park and Rec Commission then, so he did...
So, okay. So, people are saying, well, if we, that we should adhere to the plan that the people approved. And when I was there, the general, the plan was, the people put in what they wanted. They said, "We want play equipment. We want a place to have a picnic. We want a place to play ball. We don't want a restroom because we're, we don't want people to hang out there and use it. We don't want the homeless people. We don't want short bushes that people can hide behind." So, they did a laundry list of things they wanted. They said they wanted trees. One person that I remember, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, said, "We want to keep those two trees." Excuse me?
Folks, folks, please, everybody gets to be heard, and this is the council member's opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. So, the architect put all those things together and showed us several alternatives, and we moved things around, and people said what they said, and we got the plan. This plan includes a play structure. It includes...
Picnic area.
Picnic area, thank you. It includes adult equipment, exercise equipment. If we keep the trees and do the, do the, whatever they called it, blocking off and thing, then you get none of those things. It's, there's nothing there except lawn. How is that following what the neighbors said they wanted? It's not at all. It has just two trees. Excuse me?
Ma'am, ma'am, please, everybody should have, ma'am, everybody gets the same respect and courtesy to be heard, so please.
So, to me, if we don't cut the trees and we leave them there, and we do this thing that we are blocking the trees off and just have lawn, that's not abiding by what I heard at least at the different meetings. If we do the alternate and we move the play equipment, that eliminates a lot of other things that people said that they wanted. So, that's that. I'm just putting that aside. I also, I heard a lot of people talk about trees and how important they are. This council has supported planting street trees. They supported me in 2014 when I spearheaded planting 100 street trees. I had to fight, and the Beautification Task Force members that I lead, we had to go knock on over 1,000 doors, over 1,000 doors in this city to get people to agree to a street tree. That's how, that's how valued street trees are here. And we, I'm the person who started the city tree, not organization, but that San Bruno became a street, city tree, I'm sorry, US Cities, I can't remember what it's called, but it's a part of the organization where you, the city has to plant so many trees a year. They have to have a urban forest, reforesting plan. They have to do all these different things. And we've been doing that since 2005, I think, it may even be earlier. I did that. This council supported me on that. The previous council supported me on that. We have Arbor Day, we don't do it on Arbor Day because that's not a good day to plant trees, but we go out and plant trees. The Beautification Task Force members go out and plant trees. We get the Boy Scouts to help us plant trees. So, this, this council, the previous council, I personally have planted with these hands and dug holes many trees. So, anyway, I resent people saying things about us that aren't true, and I apologize that if you think I am saying an untruth, I don't believe I am. So...
Okay. Michael, Laura, do you have any comments, questions? Laura?
So, first of all, I want to say that I thank you for coming out tonight and voicing your concerns and your comments and your opinions. I think as council member O'Connell mentioned, that we do get emails and communication from residents. I didn't realize how much as a council person, but it's an ongoing, and the communication regarding Florida Park has been going on for months, not just tonight, not just in the last couple of weeks, but we've been getting a lot of communication for a number of months on this project. I take the decisions serious, and I don't just, you know, look at it based on dollars and make best sense of it. I take offense to comments that have been made when I hear things about whether we're being honest, whether, that we're getting the real story, whether a report that we receive from an arborist is true, or the report we receive from staff is true. And, and I think that that's not a fair statement. And we, as a council, appreciate the staff that we have on site today, and we appreciate the effort that they put into getting us the facts, the facts as the way they are. You know, nowadays, when you want to do anything, it costs you an arm and a leg, not necessarily an arm and a leg, but it costs you a lot of money. Is the cost $50,000? Well, number one, it's, it's an estimated cost, it's not an exact cost. But isn't expensive to make any changes to that park by moving a playground? Yes, it is. Have we spent a ton of money on this site already? Yes, we have. You know, we care about our entire city. We care about our residents. If, I drove through the city of San Bruno, which I do on a regular basis in many different areas, and I look at a park that exists today, and there are trees with pine cones, in hindsight, should we have planted that tree so next to the playground? No, we shouldn't have. But knowing what we're doing today in the design of a park, you need to make choices that are the best decision going forward, and a decision that is based on the safety and the well-being of our children. There's not a single kid that you want to put in a playground next to a tree dropping pine cones, pine cones, sap, whatever it is, into the playground. You want to make sure your kids are free, right? You don't want them stepping. What are they doing at the park when I saw them on Saturday? They're running around with their no shoes on. What happened to their shoes? I can't remember where my son put his shoes or his socks after a party. They're always off. So, I want to make sure that parks are safe, and I want to make sure that the kids are safe in the playground. And I think like Irene said, you know, I was part of this process, as well as council member Salazar, involved in the discussions and the feedback regarding what parents and what children actually wanted of this park. We had a few kids that showed up to some of these meetings. And the park that's been designed at Florida Park is a beautiful park. It comes with a lot of great amenities and things that I think make the Florida Park an ideal situation. Am I really depressed and broken up and frustrated by the process? All of that, right? In hindsight, looking back, did we make mistakes? We probably did. And I'm sorry you felt like it wasn't transparent or that mistakes were made, but we all make mistakes. I'm not perfect, and I know we as staff members are not perfect, but we're here today. We're here today to move forward. You know, when I looked at, around at the staff and the family and friends at the Earl and Glenville opening, I thought, Jesus, we should be doing this for Florida Park. We should be doing this. This is a long way overdue. We want that beautiful park. As a Park and Rec Commissioner, when I sat there and we looked at plans and we looked at designs and we heard the feedback, I'm excited about that park. Like Irene said, that part of the neighborhood needs something. It needs to be... It needs to be livened up, and we need to make it the best beautiful park that it can be. And we can do that with the design of the park the way it is. I'm sorry if I don't agree with your comments, or if I disagree with your comments, or if I agree with your comments, but I make a choice based on a lot of information. A lot of information that you don't necessarily have readily at your fingertips, but based on factual information. And the facts that stand are very simple. The Norfolk Island pine tree does need to come down for the simple fact that it is a tree that is of danger. The cedar tree, and both trees, by the way, are beautiful in their design. They're beautiful. I mean, I would love to have these trees and more of these trees in our town. But unfortunately, some of the trees provide something that is not adequate for this park. And so I'll continue to hear other comments, but I just want, I just want to make sure that you know that decisions made here are not easy, and they're not made quickly, and they're made with full thought and full process. And those are my comments.
Michael? You're welcome, sir.
So four years ago, when Irene brought this idea to the council, I was on the council four years ago, and I, for one, was against the idea of buying this property for a number of reasons. Financial reasons and just, I didn't feel that it was the right priority for the city at the time, but the rest of the council prevailed, and they said, "No, we need this property. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and we need to build this park." So once the decision was made, I, of course, embraced it wholeheartedly and decided, you know, I would support it any way I could. But I never imagined that one of the issues that this park would develop is the amount of infighting in the neighborhood that has been caused over these trees. And I know a lot of it was caused by the city and the way we handled it. Like my colleagues, I, you know, can't help but be offended being the target of accusations, but I can say that I definitely believe that there was never ill intent in anything. And maybe some messages weren't delivered correctly, maybe there was conflicting comments that were made, but I doubt that it was ever anyone's intent on the city's part to mislead the public or to try to hide something. And I am sorry that it ended up being perceived that way. But both as a council member and a park and rec commissioner, and again, as a council member, I know that it's always been our intent to represent the wishes of the community. Alex Melendez, who's here, and I, we were on the subcommittee, and we oversaw the community outreach related to the park. And I know that there was some fighting even then, whether we should let dogs in the park or, you know, what amenities are more important. But we worked through those things, and there were some strong opinions. We listened to everything, and in the end, I believe we presented some designs that were the result of that collaboration, bringing the community together and our consultants that we brought in to work on the park and the city staff at the time. And again, I know that there are some very strong opinions around these trees. And I, like Laura said, I appreciate everybody who's been, not only here tonight, but at every park and rec commission meeting, they were there at the park to hear the updates. And I appreciate the passion and all the work that you guys have put into it. But again, you know, it's really disheartening that it's come to an issue that's just so divisive in the community. And, you know, I'm not thoroughly convinced that these cones are an immediate hazard. Like one of the speakers said, you know, the likelihood of being hit by a cone is pretty unlikely. But I do know that where I work, there are a number of redwood trees, and they drop big pine cones, and cars get hit by them. So the longer, the more time you spend underneath one of these things, and you have squirrels running around, they do come down, and I don't know that we want to have the exposure, no matter how remote that could be. But if kids do spend a lot of time in that park underneath a tree that could potentially drop something, I can see where maybe the likelihood of that happening is more. I never really thought much about the trees when we were talking about the designs and all the amenities that we wanted to put in there. I know that we knew they were there. When we started talking about this, you know, there was still a house there, too. And it was actually a really interesting house. It had very interesting architecture, even though it was falling apart. But we had to get rid of that for safety reasons, and that was unfortunate as well. Would have been nice to preserve it. It had some historical value. But in the end, I'm really thinking that the optimal design for this park is going to come from having a clean slate and putting things where they belong and just making this the best park that we're able to design for the community. Like Laura mentioned, when we had the ribbon cutting at the Glenview Park, it was just amazing to see the people that showed up and how they just took to that park. And, you know, we had some designs that came in, we went through a number of different designs, the same process there. There were issues there. People, some people wanted one thing, other people wanted something different, but we worked it out. And in the end, it was, it's a huge asset to that neighborhood. I know this park is going to be a huge asset to this neighborhood. And I really want to see, like I said, just the best park that we can build. And if it means that a couple of trees have to go to make room for this design, I know that we're going to, we're going to have a number of new trees that are going to come in. The park is going to be beautiful. It's going to provide a habitat for, you know, the wildlife. It's going to provide, you know, clean air, a beautiful place for people to hang out, to take their children to play. And with that, I mean, I think I'm leaning toward following staff's recommendation.
I won't take the long time to echo everything, but I was with Councilmember Salazar when I voted against purchasing the park. And it was looking at economics, taking the Park and Louvre fund that was there and wiping it out. So again, it's always looking at global, but again, it was taking all of the money out of the Park and Louvre fee, and then it was the abatement, and then it was that. So I was thinking, okay, how are we going to pay for that? And then you have to have the maintenance, right? When we have something new, we want to keep it appropriate, even with people willing to adopt a park and stuff like that. So when Mr. Wayne, former mayor, asked me to be on the subcommittee, I kind of asked him, like, "Why would you ask me, somebody who voted against it?" And he just said, you know, "You've had park and rec background, you've been on, you've worked the staff, you've been on the commission." And so I said, "Well, then Irene and I will be on the subcommittee and do our best job to make it the best park in this town because this is what the majority of the council wanted, and that's how it works up here." So with that said, I know for a fact, being at those meetings, it was seen, assumed that those trees would remain. That's just a fact. I was there. And I understand that, as Michael said, but you had the house there, and then when things start to, now all of a sudden we had a design problem. We had to get a new firm in there. I think one thing that I do appreciate is that Javon, the new city manager, and I, and Raina, and Tim, sat down soon into his term with us to understand the email you sent, to say, "Where are we at? Help me understand what's been said, what's going on, and what's going to happen." And at that meeting at City Hall, there was that commitment to say, "All right, let's get facts. Let's get independent Arborists," which they did. Now, you may say that Kevin is not being honest. I don't know. I'm not going to doubt his credentials, and I'm not going to doubt what he does for a living because obviously I don't do it. What I am concerned about is the, any time I sit up here and the city is noted as far as having a safety element or concern, and I don't know, death seems a little, I know it's your report, and I just said I wasn't going to challenge that, but death seems a little much, but let's just say injury. And I know the question is, well, has that ever happened? In my tenure up here, there have been two incidences where trees damaged vehicle or life, and the city got a claim. Bottom line. You know, there's a lot of eucalyptus down here on Crystal Springs Road that got removed, a lot of them, because they went by because of that, and then they had to assess each eucalyptus. And then if there was a determination made, because you couldn't have that happen again. I mean, one big limb fell on the car in the lot. One hit a young person. So those are the things that I do worry about up here in the bigger picture because for, just as if it was my property, if I'm told that this is going to be unsafe, I have to correct it or eliminate it because I can't take that chance that whether I sit up here or I'm no longer here, and then it happens, and it's, they come back and they say, "You were told. You knew it." So the only alternative would be is to put a barrier around it to make it safe. In all honesty, I know some people said, "Well, just put a sign." Well, don't tell me that a parent who loves her child and says, "My child doesn't read." How do you expect my child to know that, and then something happens? I just think about maybe the worst in a wrong way, but I want to make sure the community and the neighborhood and the children are safe. So my concern is with the pine, honestly, because I don't think we should diminish the park. That is where I saw the enthusiasm, and Michael was right. The dog question, I think, absorbed a half of one meeting, just about whether to let a dog walk through that park or not. In the end, we got somewhere with it, but we kind of had to come back and say, "Okay, we're not going to go down that path again. You know, we got to think about the bigger picture." And there was the enthusiasm and the excitement. I heard it and I saw it. And again, as I've told stories, I'm going to tell Raina, it was like, you know, in my days when I was a kid, I thought the place was haunted. So that's what I thought that house was. And so to see it come down, I think the council also felt, I will say, that they didn't want to have development for more housing or facilities, which means more cars. So it was another option to also have open space, and that was, it was a lifetime opportunity. In retrospect, even though it's been a battle and a challenge in economics, I think it was a good call, and I think it will be good for the neighborhood. So those are my thoughts. So we're back to council for, what we have here is we have an appeal. So if you, upholding the appeal would mean keeping the trees. Denying the appeal would mean to remove the trees. Of course, there's two alternatives also that staff has put forth, so, or if council has other suggestions.
Irene?
I move that we deny the appeal and leave the original park design as it is.
So there's been a motion made to deny the appeal. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
There's a motion made and a second to deny the appeal. All those, oh, I'm sorry, city manager?
Can I just ask council to clarify for the record? You said deny the appeal and leave the original design as is with the removal of the two trees, correct?
You're correct.
Irene?
Yes, with the removal of the two trees.
Okay. So let's restate the motion, or we'll get the motion in a second if we have it. I'll ask the city to clarify.
I move to deny the appeal and accept staff's recommendation to remove the two trees.
Was that, with the second?
And I will second that.
Okay.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Okay. And I'm sorry that I think you are right in the sense that it could be done better and communicated better, and I think the city manager and staff is working on that to do just that. So I'm sorry that we had to get to this point, and I'm sorry that it wasn't smoother, but I do hope that we'll have the joy of the park when we're all there to celebrate in its opening.